This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, April 29th. This meeting is called to order. We'll be starting tonight, our favorite way to start one of our public meetings, and that is with the Brighton Believer Awards with Dr. McGowan.
Thank you. As you know well, the Brighton Believes Council selects nominees to receive Brighton Believers Awards. For those that demonstrate Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control, the award winners are students, teachers, staff members, coaches, parents, community members, and we encourage people to nominate folks online using the form there at BCSD.org/believers. And we are really, really, really privileged to have some great people here with us tonight to carry on this great tradition of starting in a way where we recognize amazing people in our community. And an amazing person that I'd like to call out first, Harvey Westbrook, could you come on up, please?
And Dr. Hall and Mr. Lino, if you could come on up because it's in that area, and anybody that helped nominate Mr. Westbrook, if you're here tonight, okay, if you didn't know, kind of a kid or not, so.
All right, I am so excited to tell you about, first of all, this is Harvey, in case you don't recognize him, because he doesn't have his sunglasses on. Like, the guy who always exudes safety, security, thoughtfulness, but in a very different way than you might expect. He makes you feel so comfortable and so safe through his kindness, through that smile, through all of his incredible gifts. Knowing every student, I think, is pretty remarkable. Security guard at Brighton High School, he was nominated by many BHS students. There were too many to include everything, but here are some highlights. Zoe wrote, "Harvey brightens people's day, is very respectful and bonds with students. He is more than just a security guard at BHS. He gets to know every student who attends BHS and welcomes people in school all day with a great attitude, gesture, and smile." Ella wrote, "He is always so welcoming to everyone who walks through the high school doors and takes the time to ask you how you're doing." I would also say, he not only asks you, but he actually means it, if you know what I mean? Like, when somebody really, really is curious how you're doing. And he makes sure he knows you by name. For a lot of people, high school wouldn't be the same without him. Peter wrote, "Harvey is the embodiment of Brighton beliefs. He is always kind to every student, often conversating with them in passing in the hallways. He's willing to always help everyone with a smile on his face. He truly cares for his job as he works hard every day, and he cares about his school, knowing almost every student by name." Hannah wrote, "Harvey makes sure everyone feels seen and valued. He is always supporting the students at the school." AJ wrote, "Harvey is so kind to everyone and is a true role model at Brighton." Sal wrote, "He is a trusted adult to many students and does his part to make the school a better place." Luca wrote, "Everyone sees him as a role model for his work ethic." Madeline wrote, "Harvey demonstrates an immense amount of kindness and understanding to not only our school, but our community. He has become one of the most welcoming people in the school. Every day, he greets me and every student with warm gestures and a big smile. He is a trusted and loved adult within the school." Ariella wrote, "He's been an amazing, trusted adult and friendly face to legions of BHS students, and truly embodies the values and character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control that the Brighton Believes Awards celebrate." He is such an amazing human being, makes our school a better place each and every day, has done so for so many, including my own family. Thank you, Harvey. We so appreciate you. And Dr. George Smith, if you could come on up, a familiar face in these hallways. Is anybody here from the Conservation Board who is joining us for nomination also, please come on up? Fantastic. Thank you for joining us. Welcome back. Retired teacher, Dr. George Smith. Retired science teacher, community member, nominated by the Town of Brighton Conservation Board, almost as tall as the trees he loves and protects. Dr. George Smith has been a dedicated, active member of the Town of Brighton's Conservation Board and Tree Council for nearly 11 years. In his dual capacities as Conservation Board Member and Faculty Advisor to the BHS Lorax Club, he combined the passion of the students and the interests of Brightonians at large into an annual Arbor Day Tree Planting Day of Action. Over 1,100 saplings secured from sources such as the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's School Seedlink Program and Color Brighton Green have been planted throughout the open space in Buckland Park. This year, although retired from the Brighton Schools, George continued to spearhead the Town of Brighton's Arbor Day Volunteer Activities focused on the town's new tree nursery. George has been instrumental in advocating, along with his fellow Conservation Board members, for the creation of a town-owned and managed tree nursery at Buckland Park, developing a proposal in consultation with town staff, board members, and community organizations. By purchasing low-cost tree saplings from Monroe County Soil, Water, and Conservation District and other state and local sources, and then raising them in this nursery, the town will have an economical means to increase the number of new street trees being planted in place of those trees that must be taken down due to age, damage, or disease. In addition to his longtime contributions to the management and expansion of the town's tree canopy, George regularly shares his knowledge with learners of all ages. Through all of these activities and initiatives, Dr. George Smith shows that he is the embodiment of what it is to be a Brighton believer. Thank you so much, George.
We're going to begin a new tradition tonight, Dr. McGowan, as well, and have you talk about headlines and heroes. I'll ask you to talk a minute about that and introduce that.
Yes, a few new, a few people to recognize tonight, and a new tradition, hopefully, starting tonight, where we would like the opportunity just to simply recognize the great work that is being done by people, those people making headlines and being heroic in a variety of different ways, and this can frankly be anybody. It's kind of the things that might fall outside of all the categories of Brighton believes, although a lot of wonderful work falls into that, but is a little bit more of a way just to give a shout-out or a kudos or explain something great that's happening for some people in the district. So there are three people tonight that I'd like to tell you about and very simply read to you what I've written to them, congratulating them for some of their work. The first is Jamie Porta, a teacher here at Brighton High School. Congratulating him on the Singer Family Prize, and on behalf of the board and the leadership team and the entire school community, we are congratulating him on his selection as the recipient of this prestigious award for excellence in secondary school teaching. It is an extraordinary and well-deserved honor that reflects the deep impact he has on his students, subject matter, and the profession. The University of Rochester could not have chosen a more deserving educator. A former student of Jamie's, Marina Zappa Sochny, in the class of '25, captured it perfectly. She said, "Your passion, your clarity, your real-world connections, and your unmatched support didn't just inspire my love of chemistry. They reshaped my academic future and teaching philosophy. Your innovative assessment model focused on mastery and learning over pressure and performance is a model for educators everywhere. You're not only changing lives in your classroom, you're setting the bar for what great teaching looks like." On behalf of all of us who are fortunate enough to work alongside Jamie and having had them in our children's lives, we thank him and congratulate him and wish him luck in his continued effort to keep inspiring and teaching. So congratulations to Jamie. The next headline and hero is Caroline Buchi. This is for gratitude and admiration for all that she does. And again, on behalf of all of us, we want to make sure that we're recognizing Caroline and celebrating the incredible impact she has on our students' families and the entire school community. I wrote to Caroline that her name came across my desk in a beautiful manner in a letter from Kendra Waite, and I couldn't be more grateful to learn about the difference you're making in the life of her daughter Adley, and by extension, in all of our lives. Her commitment to creating a nurturing, dynamic, and inclusive classroom is extraordinary. The way she blends Spanish, English, and sign language into her teaching and how she brings habits of the mind to life for her students is a remarkable example of how thoughtful, intentional teaching shapes confident, compassionate young learners. Families see it, kids feel it, and her colleagues admire it. Thank you so much, Caroline, for your dedication, your presence, and your heart. You make Brighton a better place every single day. So congratulations to Caroline. And last but not least, we're very excited to recognize Janice Mix, who is a health teacher at French Road Elementary School. And again, on behalf of all of us, I wrote to Janice, "It is my absolute pleasure to congratulate you on being named the Central Western Zone Elementary School Health Education Teacher of the Year." This recognition is a powerful reflection of what we in Brighton already know so well. Your unwavering dedication, passion for health education, and deep commitment to student wellness make you an extraordinary educator and role model. Recommended by one of your colleagues and celebrated by so many others, your positive energy, professionalism, and enthusiasm for teaching health have left a lasting mark, not only on your students, but on families like mine as well. The impact you've had on my own children has been truly meaningful, and I'm incredibly grateful, both as a parent and as your colleague. You bring kindness, heart, and excellence to everything you do, and we are all so proud to celebrate you, Janice. With gratitude and admiration, congratulations to Janice as well. So again, thank you very much for allowing us to celebrate Janice, Jamie, and Caroline. We're very proud of their work and the opportunity to be able to celebrate them. Thanks.
Great addition. Thank you. As is the case with all of our public meetings, we provide the opportunity for participation, to hear feedback or questions from the community for the Board of Education. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will go on to the approval of the agenda. Before I put forward that motion, I'm going to request a change to the agenda. Current items 10 and 11, which is presentation by Fisher Associates, having to do with the construction in the front of the high school, particularly in the road, and approval of the change order to be moved up in front of the principal reports, current number seven. With that amendment, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also have on here, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes from our April 8 business meeting. Are there any questions, edits, or comments with regards to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will now go to the new number seven, which is a presentation by Fisher Associates, update on the design of the entranceway at Brighton High School. Lou, are you going to be introducing? Okay, great. I'll also say that everybody is welcome to stay, although if there are people who have things to do, now is a good time.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to provide an update to the Board of Education and really the broader community on the traffic study that was approved by the Board of Education in May of 2024. If you recall, in February of 2024, the voters approved a capital project that will redesign the entranceway to Brighton High School. Subsequent then, we engaged Fisher Associates, and I have with me Tim Faulkner to give a presentation tonight. We engaged Fisher Associates to design a signal light, so that's an ongoing parallel project to the design of the entranceway. So Tim and his team have been working with Monroe County DOT and wants to provide an update. We've taken as far as we can at this point, and we need additional board authorization to continue in the design, again, parallel to the upcoming construction of the parking lot.
Yeah, I'm just going to salute two things because I don't want to assume anything. Monroe County DOT is a Department of Transportation, so I don't want to...
Yes, no, thank you.
Yeah, that's all right. This will be the most visible project we probably take because virtually everyone in Brighton drives on Winton Road every couple of days. So it's really important that people see what we're doing, the work, Tim, you've done with the DOT, to sort of make sure that we follow all the appropriate regulations. This is all about making that area safer for students and the people in our community alike, so appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Again, my name's Tim Faulkner. I'm a Senior Transportation Manager with Fisher Associates. Just to back up a little bit, starting back in 2023, we were engaged by the school district to do a traffic study of the new entrance to the school at the opposite Newton Drive. And as part of that study, there was a desire by the school district to attempt to get a traffic signal at that new intersection that we were creating, a long-held desire by the school district. They had tried a number of times to get a traffic signal light at the existing driveway and have been, were unsuccessful. So we were engaged, we did a traffic study for the school district. We presented that to the Monroe County Department of Transportation after numerous conversations with them. They finally approved the construction of a new traffic signal at the proposed new entranceway. Along with that study that we did, we also did a whole safety analysis of this corridor to determine what's kind of going on out there, what's the reasons for all the accidents that have been occurring, all the near misses. And one of the things that we found out through that area was it's, the way the lanes are configured on Winton Road, you've got, you know, if you're coming southbound, you've got two lanes coming out of the 12 Corners intersection, and then you narrow down to a single lane, and then it kind of widens back out for a left turn lane, and then a through lane. And then going northbound, you've got a single lane past the Newton Drive, and then you widen out to two lanes in front of the school. And as people are jockeying in there, plus you have a number of driveways, not only for the school, but you've got a number of residential driveways on the west side of Winton Road. We saw a lot of like side swipe type accidents, overtaking accidents, people either trying to get out of the way of a car that was stopped to turn left and kind of try to swerve in the other lane and didn't look over their shoulder appropriately, speeding vehicles, things like that. So as part of that initial traffic study, we had recommended what we call a road diet. And really, that is to reconfigure the lanes on Winton Road to make that corridor a little safer. So when we were engaged in 2024 to start the signal design work, part of our work was also to analyze that corridor in a little more detail that was requested by Monroe County to determine if this road diet would work from a traffic flow perspective. The last thing they want to do is reduce lanes through there and then all of a sudden have traffic backups all over the place. So we did some additional analysis of this corridor to make sure that a road diet would work. We presented that information to Monroe County. They agreed with our analysis, and they thought that the road diet was a very good idea, that it would reduce the number of accidents, it would organize traffic better. It would provide safer movements for those cars turning left, so instead of possibly turning across two lanes of traffic, now you're only crossing one lane of moving traffic, especially for the mid-block crosswalk at the north end of the high school. You know, right now, people have got to cross four lanes of traffic there. And one of the concerns that we have with crosswalks and four lanes of traffic is that maybe one car will stop and the other car maybe might not see the passenger or the pedestrian in the crosswalk, and will keep going through. And we observed a lot of near misses when we were out here watching what goes on at that crosswalk. So that kind of, you know, when we submitted our initial preliminary drawings to Monroe County and our recommendations for the road diet, they agreed with the preliminary signal design work, and we presented this concept plan to them and what we thought it would, what it would look like in terms of the lane configurations. They agreed with the, they had a few minor comments on how the lanes were going to be laid out through here in terms of the left turn lanes and where we wanted to get traffic into single lanes. But the design of that work was never included in our initial contract with the school district back in 2024. It was just to do an analysis of that. So Monroe County wants this road diet included as part of the signal design work that were going on, so that when the signal design is going on, once that's completed, the road diet would be also completed at the same time. So when the road, when the signal goes live, so to speak, the road diet would be in place and make this area much safer. So really, our supplemental work is to complete the detailed design of the road diet, which would include an overlay of Winton Road and then all the new pavement markings along there. Now, it's, we're going to lay these out in a manner that at some point down the road, when Monroe County DOT has a full repaving of this area, which may be in four or five years, that there will be the potential to put also bike lanes in along Winton Road. And that obviously is a benefit to people that, you know, kids that may ride their bikes in the area with all the residential areas. So again, the goal is overall improve the safety of that whole Winton Road corridor and really to better organize traffic through here.
Thank you. Questions for either Tim or Lou?
Timeline? So we mentioned that four to five years down the road, maybe add those bike lanes in conjunction with a full repaving.
Yep.
How about the other safety changes?
So we're in the process now of doing our, finishing our design work. So the goal would be to complete the design work through the rest of this year, and then in conjunction with whatever the school starts to, start their, you know, the new driveway access, you know, every, all our design plans would be approved by Monroe County, so those, all that could be done simultaneously.
So just as far, if I can interject, no, you're good. So as far as timing, as far as capital projects, so we're expecting SED approval for the entranceway to the high school, the reconstruction of our parking lot and utilizing the new entranceway that we purchased with the, from the 12 Corners Presbyterian Church. So that's likely to happen next, next summer is when we'll break out around on that. If we wanted to do this work parallel with that, we'll need another authorization because likely we're going to be responsible for the cost of the light, the cost of the crosswalk, and then certainly improvements. Now, that may be an expedited process. We likely would contract with Monroe County itself to do that, but that's likely going to be a capital outlay that's going to be required by the Board of Education. So we'll talk about in our capital planning, when's the best time to secure that? You know, my anticipation is to recommend to the superintendent a withdraw from our capital reserves to be able to do that, you know, through an intermunicipal agreement, and would have to coordinate that as best as possible with that construction project next year.
And every, nobody can guarantee anything, but everything we've done with Monroe County DOT so far, we're all good with them. Everything's working, yeah. So we don't expect, we don't expect any surprises, anything, yeah.
And the, does the road, does the work on the road and the signal light require SED approval?
That's not our understanding right now because that's not our property. They don't have jurisdiction over that.
Do, but, so we'll contract directly with Monroe County to do that. It's sort of outside the scope of a usual school capital.
That's my understanding right now. That's in other school districts, that SEI has been the lead architects on. That's how they've managed it.
Thank you.
And we still try to put it into the project as far as authorization and eligibility of it, but it's a different agency of jurisdiction.
We'll, we'll expect to have a pretty robust communication plan, particularly with our neighbors on Winton, to keep everybody updated with timing and what things are going to happen and all that.
Yeah, this is really the first step, you know, based on where Tim and, and his design with, you know, the, really the tentative, is it fair to say tentative approval from Monroe County, we can start communicating this and, you know, it's really not a negotiation process. It's what, it's what DOT is going to authorize. So, but we can begin that public information campaign with the acceptance and the continued design of the project as what's outlined tonight.
It's a small point, but it's an important point. As you said, authorized by the Monroe County DOT, we can certainly listen to feedback, but we can only do what we are authorized to do in this regard. And that's just a really important point to remember. Okay. Any other questions?
No, just a statement. I live off a major thoroughfare that went through a road diet, and it's such a better situation for, for traffic on that street and by our house, so.
That's good to know.
Okay. Tim, thank you for your time tonight. Very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the change order for the additional design of the Brighton High School entranceway.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to go back. I'll do quickly on approval of the ROC resolution. That has to do with us working with other municipalities and school districts to create even better data privacy, if you will. We've had a chance to review this before. Any questions with regards to the ROC being an acronym, ROC Resolution? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, we'll do approval of the 2025-2026 Board of Education meetings. This is something we all wait for so we can sort of work our schedules around it. Thank you, Dr. McGowan, for going through and getting that done for us. Any questions with regards to the calendar? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Principal Reports. Danielle? Well, now you've put me in an awkward position.
Yeah, I'm pretty, how much of a team player I am. Really selfish and my question is totally about myself.
Well done, Dr. Ed.
I just think it's really well done. Tom Hall in the high school.
Tom Hall in the way.
Thank you. And that parking lot, that change order, I could really get behind, so thank you for all of that. That's going to be huge. Yeah, I'm really, I'm really happy about it. Thank you. So I have a few special guests here who'll be presenting as part of my presentation tonight. As part of our initiative for the last two, three years, students' sense of belonging at BHS is a huge stressor of ours. And we're doing a lot of things at school to make students feel more excited about being in their school and feeling that they do belong at Brighton High School. And part of the two clubs you're going to hear from tonight are incredible advocates for making students feel like they belong in their own school. Just to share with you, in our last survey with students, 82 to 85% of our students participate in something, some club or activity within the school. 10% of our students do something outside of school, and they may work a part-time job, dance, martial arts, we've seen it all. And how do we know that? Because we've talked to those students that were not identified on rosters for clubs or sports. And our counselors also met with that 5% who were never engaged in anything in the school, as far as out of the school as well. But we determined there are things that we can do with them. Most of it is part-time job work, and we're actually helping to get some of those kids credit for working their jobs. So that is something we've been working on, trying to make all of these kids feel like they're a part of the high school, and there's something there for everyone. One of the huge groups that I talk to you about every year in November, a part of our, our Board of Education Principal Reports, is the group Natural Helpers. And I'm going to turn that over to our student presenters and advisor, Mike Bonadonna.
All right. My name is Trevor Nolan, and I'm a junior representative for Natural Helpers. Our mission as a club and program is to establish a network of helpers across Brighton High School. I'll let my friends over here talk about that process in a minute, but what you need to know is that all members of the club are introduced to the Natural Helpers process. Everyone gets a card with these steps on it, and it's just for everyday use. I keep mine in my phone case.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carol Bennett. I'm a junior at the high school. I was, became a member of Natural Helpers my freshman year, and this year, my junior year, I became a leader. Trevor briefly explained what we do in the club, but here we have some stats on why this club is important. I can let you guys peruse that a little bit on your own, but overall, it's just the most important thing is that students go to their friends for help more than any other resource that they have. So teaching them how to help each other and help each other safely is like an invaluable thing for the school to have and for the community to have.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hannah Connors. I'm a senior at Brighton High School. I have been a part of Natural Helper since my freshman year, and I became a leader my sophomore year. So each year, we take, we aim to take 40 students on a retreat where we go through the steps of the Natural Helpers process, as you've seen on the earlier slides. They are chosen from a survey that goes out in the beginning of the school year where their peers have nominated them as people that they feel comfortable going to their problems with, just as a friend or as a stranger, just someone that they feel comfortable with. We are also trying to continue our education in our group by bringing people from outside of our group, from the Brighton community, to speak on how to handle more difficult topics like suicide and depression, and just to get our group more comfortable with handling those issues.
Hi, I'm Julia Winter. I've been a part of Natural Helper since junior year, and I've been president since senior year. So the Brighton Blueprint really values mental health, which is one of the most important focuses of our club. With what Hannah talked about, our survey, we can configure our club so there is a Natural Helper in every friend group and community in our school so they can help their friends, and those friends can branch out to other communities. And that's how we're able to reach more students throughout the school. Natural Helpers has always been an integral part of Brighton, including all other clubs of Brighton. It can really bring students together, which is very important, and brings a sense of belonging to every student throughout the high school. Thank you for your time. We also have a car wash fundraiser on May 17th, so feel free to come by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to our Natural Helpers and for all the work that you do. Next up is our Muslim Student Association, a very active group. And this year, they planned our first ever assembly, mini-assembly program that we're doing new in the homerooms on Eid and Ramadan.
Um, hello, everyone, my name is Aisha, I'm a senior at Brighton High School and I'm currently the co-president of MSA.
Hello, everyone, my name is Amina, if you couldn't already tell, I'm Aisha's sister. But I'm a junior at Brighton High School and I'm the vice president of MSA.
And I'm Aram, I'm the co-president and we're not related, I'm just their friend. And to talk about, starting, starting with what we think of as MSA. Muslim Student Association is a club that is open to all students who want to learn about Islam and it's about culture and traditions.
MSA provides a sense of belonging for Muslim students who are looking for a community at school and it also fosters friendships across religious and cultural differences.
With MSA, we have completed many service-related projects, including Brighton Clean Sweep, Bara K charity, refugees, helping refugees. And most recently during Brighton Belize, we helped provide blankets to those in need. And we've also collaborated with BSU and International Club to promote diversity and inclusion in our school. And this past Ramadan, thank you to Dr. Hall and our club advisor, Mrs. Wheeler. We were able to organize a school-wide assembly to help educate students and staff about what Ramadan and Eid al-Fitr is.
During the assembly, we made, we created a video to show to our classmates explaining Ramadan and Eid as it's celebrated by more than two billion people. And we specifically made sure to focus on a lot of the cultural parallels and like the cross-sections between our practices and theirs to make it more meaningful.
And also participating in acts of service during the month of Ramadan is really important for Muslims. So we thought it would be a great idea to work with Send a Smile Today in creating twelve hundred cards to send to people of all ages who have cancer in order to spread kindness in our world. And at the end of our assembly, we passed out some of our Ramadan candies, which all of the students enjoyed.
And here's the, here's all the cards that the students created.
They were all very cute, so. And then here's our video that.
Morning and Ramadan, everyone. In this video, we hope to help you better understand what the month of Ramadan and Eid is about. Ramadan is the ninth month of the Islamic calendar and a holy month for us Muslims. Since it is believed that the Quran, Islam's holy book, was first revealed to Prophet Muhammad during this time. Since the Islamic calendar is based off the moon, Ramadan starts around ten days earlier each year. Fun fact, in the year twenty thirty-three, Christmas and Eid will be on the same day. This holy month is a time of fasting, prayer, and community observed by nearly two billion Muslims worldwide. As we fast from dawn to sunset, we abstain from food and water to focus on spiritual growth, gratitude, and charity. Many Muslims even avoid music and other forms of entertainment to maintain a clearer mind. Fasting is so integral to our lives that it is in fact one of the five pillars of Islam, including faith, prayer, charity, pilgrimage, and of course fasting. It helps build patience and discipline, strengthen gratitude and reflection, and deepen spiritual connections.
By also making us more conscious of our hunger and physical needs, fasting helps us remember and empathize with the less fortunate, which is similar to practice of Christians during Lent, Jews during Yom Kippur, and Hindus during Amanash. Thank you of others and spending time with their community is very important. One of the reasons we fast is to be grateful for our blessings and be mindful of other people. Ramadan is a time for giving to those in need. Second, a required charity and sadakah, volunteer giving, are core parts of this month. When the sun is down, you're sure to find Muslims doing some communal activity, whether it's at Sahur, the meal before dawn where we prepare for our fast, at Iftar, the meal where we break our fast, or Taraweeh, the optional night prayer where depending on your will and the mom's mood, the person instructing the prayer can be up to two hours long.
Finally, we are approaching the end of the month of Ramadan. The day marking the end of Ramadan is Eid al-Fitr and is based on the sighting of the crescent moon. Eid is one of our most important holidays where we celebrate the end of Ramadan with our communities. We pray, feast, and exchange gifts with families and friends, similar to many holidays such as Rosh Hashanah, Christmas, Diwali, and Lunar New Year. There are many unique traditions that are customary to Eid. In many countries, you will find the streets decorated with Eid decorations, people playing music, and children dancing. Adults give children money, toys, candy, and many sorts of gifts. No matter where you celebrate Eid, people dress in their nicest attire. Regardless if you're Muslim or not, Ramadan and Eid is a time where you can practice gratitude and help those in need while reflecting on your blessings.
In the spirit of Eid, this year for good Eid and Mitzvah, in homerooms will be made in greeting cards for people fighting cancer. Similar to candy canes on Christmas and gold coins in Hanukkah, you'll find Eid candy in your homerooms. Enjoy your candy in the work.
So our students in the club put together, actually put together the script together and then worked with Mr. Gruner, our videographer, and made that whole video happen. But they created the entire script and I love how you integrated so many different religions and different cultures that our other students practice. And the video was well received and again, this was the first time ever that we actually had a, some sort of an assembly about Eid and Ramadan. And now that we, as a board, as a state, we've adopted Eid, Lunar New Year, and Diwali off from school, we're trying to do more educating about why do we have these days off? And that was part of our Lunar New Year discussion and this was their second, based on the Culture Climate Leadership Team's feedback on doing more things like this for the people that don't know why we have these days off. So thank you, ladies, and thank you, MSA.
That was very, very professional.
That was very well done.
Yep, well done.
So just, there are numerous activities as we look at our priority areas, so just about to wrap it up. Our support for staff in this, this month's board presentation, share with you what we're doing. Mark Lincoln, one of our assistant principals, has taken over the wellness committee and has done tons of things to support our staff. We continue to give, just like some of the other buildings, give back faculty meetings, we just did that yesterday. Gives people, when you talk to a teacher about what do you need, what can we do to help you, it's time. And so we do give back certain faculty meetings to let them collaborate with one another, work with teams, use an hour that they wouldn't normally have had and give that back to them. And we're also allowing time during faculty meetings for, for faculty to communicate positive things to students, as well as any concerns maybe to parents, but giving them time to do that. Those are just a couple of the highlights. Lots of events coming up, you know, we're heading into that end of the year, prom, ball, AP exams starting next week. All sorts of activities and fun and we're looking forward to wrapping things up. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, great to hear from the students.
Thank you, and thank you to all our students again.
As, as Danielle is going to the podium, if students have homework that they need to attend to.
Or maybe just not to leave.
Both of those things are possible.
Correct.
Good evening.
Excellent collaboration.
Listen, students, students first, all the time. Put that in writing. We have had a short but busy April and this eighth grade spring dance, we just had on Saturday night. I have to say that the PTSA and parents did, they just completely outdid themselves, it was a phenomenal night. You can see if you look that they had the lower atrium decorated with tablecloths and so much food. The dance, the DJ, the lights, the picture area, it's hard to see in the bottom left there, but they had like all of these cutouts that made it look like you were being photographed as you came in. And then there was a huge, long red carpet and the kid, like they, the kids owned it. They came in, like they were strutting down the red carpet and they just had so much fun. And I think, you know, I was talking to Sean and Ashley while we were there that night and I said, the coolest thing about being in middle school is that you see them come in in sixth grade and students are really trying to figure out who they are and who their people are. And a lot of what I do as a sixth grade administrator is work through that with students, like who are your people? And they're so convinced in sixth grade that they're never going to find their people and they're always going to be by themselves. And then you come to a night like this and you see all the groups and like they've got their people. And it's so cool to see and see how they've grown over the years and how their groups have changed. And it's just a really great event at the end of the, the eighth grade year. So I met with quite a few parents of daughters who told me about the three hours that it took to get their hair done and their nails and all of the things, so it was fun for everybody. We also had on Friday, we had a visit from Jared Hardman, who is the conductor of the youth orchestra in the RPO. He's also an associate conductor for the RPO and he came, met with our eighth grade orchestra. We also had the opportunity for some of our eighth grade band and chorus students to come down and hear from him and learn a little bit about what he does and play with him. So nice opportunity at the end of the day on Friday. Of course, we had our very own board member come in and work with our eighth graders earlier in the month where Eleanor shared the, her dad's story of being incarcerated in the Japanese internment camp during World War Two when he was just about twelve years old, so right around the same age as our students. It was easy for them to, to empathize to some extent with everything that Eleanor shared. And this is a really nice bookend because on May ninth, we have the play from the JCC, the Survivor's Play, coming in to be performed for our eighth graders, they can learn about the Holocaust and stories of the Holocaust. So a lot of rich history, the same week, actually it was last week, our eighth graders also watched a documentary and had a meeting with the, with the director about like the Black Rosie Riveters from World War Two as well. So a lot of kind of firsthand knowledge and sharing with these students, particularly around World War Two. We're super fortunate to have collaborations with all of these folks and Eleanor told us she will come back next year, so we're excited. We also during April had a visit from the Israeli delegation. Inbal was the teacher that was joined with TCMS. And this year, for the first time, she was actually assigned to us for four days. In the past few years, it's only been one day, so we've done like a lot of pomp and circumstance in a really quick consolidated timeframe in the past, but this actually allowed us to have more time for collaboration. So she spent one full day kind of getting the feel for TCMS and going to different classes and different curricular areas. She also had lunch with our newly formed Jewish Student Union. But then she also had a day where we had different folks from our building take her to all of the buildings in the district. So she got to go to Council Rock and French Road and the high school and see what those buildings look like. She came here to French, or to Central Office, she met with Jeff Green, she met with Mike Malloy, like learned about what they do. She toured the, the clothes closet, she learned about the food cupboard, say yes to the dress and all the things that we do to support students. She also spent a day teaching with Betsy Zwass so that they could start off their collaboration, which will continue now moving forward. And then we spent another half a day with her, kind of taking her to the landmarks of Rochester. She toured some libraries, both in Brighton but the city of Rochester as well. She went to Malik's, she went to a couple of Cheesy Eddie's, you know, a couple of renowned places as well. So it was nice to, to have the longer period of time and I do have to give kudos, Katie Cantz and Sherry Hellman really took the lead on organizing all of this. So we could not have been able to provide all of that if they didn't step up and, and, and take care of that. We of course had our conference day at the end of March where teachers worked on transfer goals in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we had some team building time as well as time for staff to fill out the annual Culture and Climate Survey. And then we did about an hour and a half of grading for equity work in our building where we're looking at the recommendations that the high school has put forward through their work and their professional learning team. And then kind of scaling back, looking at it like, okay, we know this is where our students are going. So let's make sure that, that we're aware of that and thinking about how we align our practices to prepare students for what they'll meet in the high school. We also had another great grant from the BEF, you can see these felt boards that are now hanging in our library. The students love them, playing chess, checkers, and tic-tac-toe, just another opportunity for the kids to be up and relaxed. I'm getting a lot of questions from my sixth graders right now about why they don't have recess. And they're, you know, using, I, I think ChatGPT to talk about all of the amazing, or the, the positive contributions of physical activity during the day. So here's an opportunity for them to get some physical activity while they're still in the building. We also, Mrs. Lambert from the library, also worked with a lot of our Students for Poem in Your Pocket Day where students are encouraged, it's celebrated every April, April and students are encouraged to pick a poem that they like, carry it with them all day and share it with others, so another exciting activity. And the next few slides, I won't spend a ton of time on, but I just wanted to highlight that thanks to the, the community and the board for supporting the fact that we're able to offer over thirty clubs at the middle school, which is really kind of unheard of in any middle school. And that just seems to grow organically. Some, you know, we have some that are not like actual fully vetted clubs, but that teachers are getting together. We've got the Taylor Swift Club, we've got a Rubik's Cube Club, you know, just where kids are, are finding something that they're interested in and folks who are also interested in that and just being together in a space. And then we have some of our more formal clubs like our Science Olympiad that made it to states this year for the first time since before COVID. We've got our straight play, which is happening in June, Thirty Reasons Not to Be in a Play. And so rehearsals have started on that and they're gung ho. Our yearbook is just about complete, we have a few little tweaks to make on it and then it will be ready for publication. And our crafty club, Ms. Roland has taken over this year and really put some really great ideas in there. The macrame feathers, you can see there, and Morse code bracelets and things like that. We've got our Harry Potter Club and our Gaming Club and our Mindfulness Club. And what's neat is that these advisors are really leaning into the idea of offering clubs before school and after school. Our students get to school, the buses arrive no later than about seven twelve, homeroom doesn't start until seven forty-five. So leveraging that time, the mindfulness club is meeting at that time, intermurals meets at that time, culinary club sometimes meets at that time. So it, it's better for our seventh and eighth graders who are often involved in sports, so they can still be in a club and then still go to their sports after school. Speaking of culinary club, I just want to highlight the fact that there are over a hundred students in culinary club. Mr. Kanabrowski runs three different teams and they meet on an alternating schedule. They make all sorts, all sorts of creations, they even have taken field trips down to Cook's World and met with the owners there, talked about not only product, but you know, obviously culinary arts and things like that. So that, that's an amazing club, you put food out there and anybody will join, myself included. I talked about intermurals, we have it split, so there are two days a week that, that sixth grade students can participate in intermurals and then on the other three days a week, seventh and eighth graders can participate. So a lot of basketball is what they choose. Of course, we have our Service Club and Environmental Club and continues their work. Terms of staff and collaborative culture, we continue our community building activities at every meeting, regardless of whether it's a faculty meeting or a school-based equity team meeting, there's always some sort of community building that's happening. We continue to recognize folks for their efforts with, with our bear, what's the ruin doing? You know, everybody likes competitions and Spirit Weeks. We've got some snack carts lined up next week in addition to a luncheon and a whole theme that the PTSA is helping us with. And then some of those informal staff gatherings that continue to take place. Lots going on in the next few months, we've got map testing, state testing, the Survivor's Play, District Day of Dance, talent show is coming up. Our Spanish and German trips are happening in the middle of May. We've got our transition assemblies, five go six, and then folks coming over from the high school to work with our eight go nine kids, lots of concerts. And of course, we have the bonfire in the beginning of June, so super, super exciting time, it flies, but it's all great stuff.
Fantastic, any questions for Danielle? Thank you very much. Colleen?
Thank you very much. Colleen?
Thanks, Dan.
Good evening. We've had a very busy few weeks since our last meeting. Right before break, we had some visitors from the Eastman School of Music with the orchestra at Front Road. And it was great. The kids got to interact with musicians, they played for the kids, the kids had a question and answer series. And Mrs. Islam just said it was really enjoyable and engaging and she was really proud of the kids with the questions they had. And just talking about their music growth as students and then how our musicians grew to become um having careers and um aspirations to do this beyond college. So that was a fun event that took place in our multipurpose room. Uh similar to what was mentioned in the other buildings, we had a guest visitor from Mo Dean. And it was really exciting. We had two kids who had lived in Israel who decided to take part in our tour. And it was really nice watching them talk. Um they were able to give a tour of the building, they shared their favorite treats. And they talked about the different places they lived. We pulled out maps, we pulled out all the different things that had been brought to us in past visits. And it was just really um heartwarming to watch the interaction between the students and the principal that was visiting us that day. So that was a wonderful experience for everyone. Something we don't get to see very often is in Mrs. Covert's E S S classroom, there's so many different projects and things that are happening. Um this past month, we had our fifth graders working on research projects on being um mindful about waste, global warming. They did presentations for their peers, they had um videos, they had PowerPoints, they had Canva, they had everything going on in the room. It was really exciting to see what they're doing during their enrichment time during when. We have a group of kids that go to T C M S for double accelerated math. And when those kids go to double accelerated, they start the day before our students at French Road. So when they come back to French Road, they have a pocket of time when their peers are doing math. So we've been working with Mrs. Covert and doing uh daily enrichment with this group of kids. Um these particular students have been working on research on the Parthenon. Um they're actually building an app replica right in Mrs. Covert's room. She said it's taken over a whole corner of the classroom and they're working on a research project with Mrs. Dom. So it's wonderful just seeing the teachers come together to support these kids as they're doing enrichment and math at T C M S. And then what they can do during their time um when their peers are doing math during the school day. Uh if you hadn't seen on the social media pages, uh Mr. Beal organized peeps for P E. This was an opportunity where we could bring parents into physical education. And I think there are some parents in the room that were part of the P E experience. This started as a nationwide event in two thousand and nineteen. And we had a ton of parents coming in and out. They're all kind of wiping the sweat away as they walked out. Um lots of different events going on. We had um handball. We had um manipulation skills where they're doing different sports and shooting to score. And we also had some team building activities in each of the three gyms. This is something we really hope to make a tradition. The parents loved it, the kids loved it, and it was just a good time for everyone. With looking at how we're supporting staff across the district, rest of the presentation really highlights the things that staff have been working on for the past month. Um earlier in the month, we were able to attend the Habits of Mind training in Greece. And it was great hearing from local districts and local schools, including Council Rock, showcase all the things they're doing for Habits of Mind. We brought a team from French Road to look at how we can incorporate some of these ideas in French Road as we move forward. And combining that as well with the Brighton believes qualities that we've been doing. If you've seen this picture, you see Mr. Tappan and his team leading a panel, so that was a lot of fun to do. Um I don't want to echo what was said earlier, but we have been celebrating Mrs. Mix for her recognition of a recognition of Teacher of the Year for the Central Western Zone um award. And she is now in the running for the next award at the state level. So it's been very exciting to celebrate Janice. Moving into our staff development day, you've probably seen a little theme with all of the building paper towers and seeing how tall they can get. Um tell Mr. Lammer not to look too closely as we're standing on tables and chairs trying to get the tower as high as possible. But there's a lot of laughter, a lot of um collaboration between teachers, um meeting different teachers between Council Rock and Front Road. And then after we left Council Rock that day, we came back to Front Road and we talked a lot about our uh report card changes coming in the uh next year as we move into the fall. So it was a really productive day of learning. We also were able to break out into different sessions and here's a group of teachers from both Council Rock and Front Road working with our instructional leader Katie Fallon and looking at how to incorporate technology in some of their wit and wisdom units as well. As we look ahead to two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, I have had a group of teachers working on the master schedule. It's really important to hear their voices and be part of how we are creating that schedule. And after two days and a lot of thought and a lot of planning and moving things around, we think we have our solid schedule ready for next year. Using a lot of the framework that we built this year. But if you see in the pictures, there's so much laughter going on as we plan. We wanted teachers to give feedback on what's been working in the schedule this year, what are things they wish they could include in the schedule next year. And just watching them problem solve, go back and report to their teams like, yep, this is a great wish, but this is why it might not work. This is a great idea, this is how we can be flexible. We've really created some solid blocks of time where there can be professional learning community opportunities within the day. Keep grade levels and P L Cs together in their planning, so we're looking forward to continuing to put the schedule together in the coming months. I meant uh also last week, I forgot I added the slide in here, we celebrated our administrative assistants. So we did a little breakfast cart, we just celebrated them all day. Kids created cards, teachers came in with flowers, kids came in with flowers. And we couldn't do it without these this team of uh ladies who are there supporting us. If you look at their gifts, I kind of copied another colleague with our K S coordinators, but that's what they're doing. They're running the show all the time, answering calls, greeting parents, working with the kids. And they're a lot of fun and we couldn't do our jobs without them. And much of what I just showed you in pictures, we continue to work with them on fostering joy with faculty. This past Monday, we had our wellness meetings, we had people out walking, we had people reading, they were working with the therapy dogs. Getting our faculty and staff together to enjoy one another and also just get to know one another. It's a big place and giving them that time where they can really connect has been so helpful. So we're looking forward to Teacher Appreciation Week, which is in the coming week. Um so lots of surprises in store for the staff. May is jam packed and it starts tomorrow, actually, with April thirtieth. We'll be heading to the Red Wings game tomorrow with our band and chorus kiddos. And hopefully we'll have a dry event that night. I believe the game starts around six o'clock. Um and then we're moving right into our ice cream socials, all of our concerts, teacher appreciation. We're very excited about our color run. We have a ton of runners coming out next week. We're looking forward to our two go three transitions, our five go six transitions. And it's a jam packed month and then we'll be moving into June, our musical and all the other events. So it's a fun time to be at for us.
Every May calendar we have seen is just chock a block almost every night, so thank you to y'all. Any questions for Colleen? Principal Tappin?
Good evening, everyone. So you might be asking, you didn't know that I also went to space along with the ladies, but I did not. Um this was uh actually a picture that the P E staff, Coach Krieger and Mrs. Cooper showed to every P E class with me not knowing it. Um and all through April first, I just kept going, be careful, Mr. Tappin, good luck, we love you. And I was like, I don't, I don't, okay, thank you. And they were like, when will you be back? And I'm like, tomorrow. And they're like, wow, that's gonna be a fast trip. And I was like, I finally asked the second grader, what are you talking about? They're like, when you go to space. And I'm like, what, what do you mean? They're like, Coach Krieger and Mrs. Cooper told us you were going to space. And they were showing that picture for April Fool's Day. They neglected to remember that they were working with primary students who take things very literally. And thought that I was really going to space.
Oh, no, I don't think they.
No, I, okay, maybe not, okay. Uh so we welcomed this week uh one of our new therapy dogs. Uh her name is Violet. She's owned by Jill Davis, uh one of our music teachers. Uh she started with us and she is just a welcome, wonderful addition. Here are some pictures of her at work. Um that is Loki, who is Kim Ball's therapy dog. So they took a picture together outside, um just the way that she's bonded already with kids. The only thing she's really still working on is she does think that the door is like her home door. So she does take off towards it and maybe bark a little bit when you walk in, but it's already better now than it was. So um Violet is a welcome addition to uh to our staff and to to the kids. The kids just love her, so. We had our ice cream socials and open houses. Nine Cone Cone does the ice cream. We're very appreciative of them because part of the proceeds go back to the P T S A. This uh year for our book uh our book fair, we also did the Unreliable Narrator, a local privately owned bookstore. And this is a picture of a family. Um this is the second grader, Una Murphy, is on her way out and mom just grabbed me and it was one of those awesome moments. She had all the kids there. And she said, can I just take one picture before we leave Council Rock? So um this is me with all of the Murphys. Um and it's just an awesome night to reconnect with older kids. Um have kids come back in and see the building that maybe they didn't get to see the finish of. Um but share and have a a great community time together. So thanks to the P T S A for helping to organize that and to all of our teachers for making it an amazing night. We celebrated bus driver appreciation at Council Rock. Um we actually have a former T A who has retired into the cookie business. And she makes these beautiful works of art that taste delicious. Um and our P T S A actually helps to hand them out, um thanking them for all they do. Our bus drivers are truly one of a kind. Every single parent that I talk to says, oh, well, our bus driver is the best. And they all have the secret that theirs is the best, but the truth is that they are all the best, the teacher or the aides that are on there. Everyone greets kids with smiles, they make sure they get their safe. I think it's one of the most difficult jobs in our system and they do it with grace and with a smile on their face every day. So thanks to them. We had middle school readers. This is becoming uh an amazing kind of repetition of uh groups, but I love it. Um Michelle Peters helps to organize that at the middle school. Um but every time it's a different group of kids. I believe there might be a relative of Dr. Gasparino in there. Um but it's just so powerful to see um our our little guys and see their faces and watch them completely engrossed in these heroes who are either at the middle school or at the high school. So uh we will continue to find those opportunities to to bring the mentors in. And I think the mentors get something out of it as well, um coming back and and being leaders, so. P E highlights, um we did karate and we had a local sensei come in and work. Um and then we also, so a lot of these pictures will be repeats. Um it's great to see the thread that goes through. Ms. Coggins had these, but um this is actually the winning team for the highest uh paper tower. Uh there was some cry of interference with the uh vents that were blowing. Uh that they thought that those were were not helping things. Uh and then in the afternoon, we really worked uh as a culmination, our entire staff read Creating Cultures of Thinking. Uh and then created uh some teaching for everyone else on a chapter they became um they became an expert at. And it was just really great adult learning um and seeing the adults truly engaged in that. This is some pictures, again, celebrating Janice, but thanks to the district, uh Dr. Rio and the teacher center. They were all released to go and support her as an entire department, which I thought was really awesome. Sometimes you can't get everybody there. And then they also, uh while we were learning, this was on the same day as our professional development day. They also were doing some P E professional development, very specific to their discipline. We too had guests from Israel. This is Lisa from the Amit School, which is our partner. Uh a special thank you to Dr. Hall and Mrs. Hall. Um they hosted Lisa in their home. We hosted her in our school and then we worked together to kind of fill those uh do some deliveries, but also fill those uh days. We were able to get to the Susan B. Anthony House um to park Lee, to do some shopping. Um and this is Lisa teaching, she taught several lessons. Um and it was, it was just great to have her feel like a lifelong friend, friendship was made and connections, just some great things about that program. Colleen already spoke about this too, but we were so happy to have Habits of Mind Conference. Um you know, it's our passion at Council Rock. I know we're continuing to spread it throughout the district. But it was really great to be able to be in a group of learners from all over the world. We had people from California, Peru, um Panama. They were from all over the world, truly. We were honored to be asked to present uh about and represent Brighton and share about our journey and then how we are working to spread it. And then the day after the conference was over, as part of an extension of the conference, we had about thirty-five educators, again, from all over the world, from the conference, come to our school. And then they went on to Manor Elementary School um in Honeyway Falls. And right in the center, that's Benakalik. Um she was in our building, she was there, she was seeing all the great things that we were doing. She hadn't seen it, obviously, since we were already awarded about in two thousand nineteen. She was very disappointed for those who were there. She was very disappointed that the stairs she nearly fell down have been taken apart. Um but I told her that we did it for her and we saved a little piece of it for her, so. Um but it was really great uh to have them and she's actually agreed to something that she presented at the conference, really connecting physical activity and the habits of mind. Um and thinking about that might be our next frontier at Council Rock uh within the habits of mind. And she said, oh, Matt, I'll do that with you. And I said, oh, you're really busy. She goes, no, and I'll get a personal trainer to help with it too. And I was like, all right, great. So it was just a great time for networking and really connecting um with the people who are passionate about that as well. Um priority area of staff supports. So we handed out flamingos to every staff member before the break and just said, whatever you're doing, it could be staying close, local to home, you can do anything. So uh take a picture with it and share it. And we now have a running picture slideshow uh for the kids to see. So our family clearly went to Washington, D.C. Um it was great. Hayden took that picture. I couldn't believe he got it right in the middle. So uh we also have the mask dancer where people uh will dress in a costume and dance and the kids have to guess who uh is in the costume. Our wellness lounge is up and running and is very much utilized by our adults. And then just this past week, this wasn't in when I sent it to you earlier because it just happened this week. But our P E teachers organized staff cardio drumming. It's what the um kids are doing in their unit. And they just invited us to come along. It was such a great way to start on Monday morning. I was sweating. Um I was happy that it was a little cooler outside when I went, but it was so great to um again, have the the staff all join together and and do some fun kind of exercise and a good way to to get us giggling and starting the the week. We've got our author visit coming up, a nonfiction author uh that comes on Friday. Then it's teacher appreciate, it's appreciation kind of time of year. Um I wish the world would like spread those out a little bit, but it's Teacher Appreciation Week, it's School Nurse Appreciation Day. We did just have Administrative Assistance Appreciation Day. It's also bike and walk to, it's actually bike, walk and wheel. They've added the wheel in. Um so if you are wheeling on like a roller blade or a scooter or something, uh to school week, that is coming up. We have our volunteer reception where we honor all the amazing people who've, you know, helped to make our school great. Half day on the twenty-third and then no school uh in Memorial Day. So we are, it's like, phew, taken off like a rocket, so. Questions, haha, literally, like a rocket.
Question. Questions for Principal Tappin? No, thank you very much to all the principals for the update. As we said, a lot going on in May. Uh next up, we have bids. Um in our constant effort to uh take advantage of our partnerships with other school districts, cooperative bids for a number of these supplies. In this case, we've got bids, a cooperative bid for fine paper, for natural gas and for music. Motion to approve those bids.
So moved?
Moved by Sue, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, we've got field trip approval and some fundraising activities, some eating and getting your car cleaned and seeing the talent show sorts of things. Or a fashion club won as well. Uh motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing long and drawn out. I will ask first Dr. McGowan and then our legislative co-chair Karen, just a quick update on the state budget. There was things out.
Apparently the state has come to an agreement. We don't have any uh details or briefings yet on what that means. Uh so we will, we are staying tuned like everybody else. We're told they're going to begin voting in the next couple of days and printing budget bills, but without language, it's hard to know what that means, so.
Anything you want to add?
Um it looks like Universal Meals made the cut, which is something Monroe County School Board Association has been hoping for for a long time as as well as I think folks here in Brighton.
Been going to Albany for and talking about, so yes, all of you.
Um so that will be, I I'm I still have uh deep questions about what happens if federal funding is redrawn, is withdrawn from the National School Lunch Program. But you know, for now, we're taking that win. We'll see.
It sounds as if a cell phone bell to bell uh ban has also been agreed to in the budget. So there's so many details to that that we would like people to not panic at this point in any direction, whatever people's perspectives are, because we don't know how that will be implemented, how that will be supported, what the restrictions will be, exactly how devices are stored, those kind of things. There's literally the devils in the details, so we'll we'll see and we'll communicate appropriately.
And there's no sense of what the final budget runs look like?
None.
So.
Stay tuned, I guess is the answer on that. Uh on behalf of the board, we'll also thank, it was Administrative Professionals Day last week. We thank.